Hello all and welcome to the Rails Board Orientation Meeting. This is Friday, July 28, 2023. I am Alex Fancina, President of the Rails Board, and I call this meeting to order at 9:37 a.m. Emily, would you please call roll?
Monica Caldicott.
Here.
Rosie Margot.
Jeanne Carroll.
Here.
Alice Creason.
Here.
Gwen Gregory.
Here.
Robin Helenthal.
Here.
Diane Hollister.
Jennifer Hulianic.
Here.
Renee Leva. Julie Millbeck. Thomas Stagg.
Here.
Alex Fancina.
Here.
Vanessa Villarreal. Karen Voitich.
Catherine Gudicke.
Here.
Number one.
Thank you, Emily. We'll handle guests and public comments at the same time. We'll start here in Burr Ridge. Monica?
Monica Harris, Rails.
Sharon Swanson, Rails.
Joe Philippeck, Rails.
Emily Feister, Rails.
Laila Heath, Rails.
Dan Boscombe, Rails.
Anne Slaughter, Rails.
Ola Bronski, Rails.
And Ryan Hemble, Rails.
Do we have any public comments here in Burr Ridge? Okay, if not, Emily, would you please read the name of any guests on Zoom?
The only guest on Zoom is Mary Kate Murray.
Thank you. Are there any public comments from Zoom participants, or have we received any by email? Thank you. All right, Emily, well, sorry, covered Zoom already. Moving on. Next is Monica with welcomes and introductions.
Well, hello all and welcome. Thank you so much for being here today and especially for dealing with the technical difficulties that are a bit beyond our control at the moment. Mark Hatch is also here today, and he'll join us for staff introductions, but he's troubleshooting some of the facilities today, so he'll come in in just a moment. But what I really hoped for was that we would have the opportunity with some of us new to the board and some of us returning, that we could go around the table and introduce ourselves. What would be really wonderful is if you could introduce yourself in terms of your name, the library you represent. And because those of you who are here on our board today, we know you're spending so much time and energy as a volunteer activity, and we so appreciate that. I love if you could share with us why you wanted to serve on the Rails Board, what's important to you about Rails and what you wanted to do as an introduction. But I will start us out. So my name is Monica Harris. I am the Executive Director here at Rails just since February of this year. Previous to that, I had been at Rails since January 2020. And previous to my career here at Rails, I worked as a Public Library Administrator, including most recently the Executive Director of the Schaumburg Township District Library, but have also worked a lot in my career as a children's librarian and a circulation manager. And I'm very, very excited to be here at Rails doing the work that we do. Alex, can I move to you?
Sure, absolutely. Hi, I'm Alex Fancina. I am President of the New Lennox Public Library District Board. I've worked in Illinois libraries and members of Rails and its prior systems for over 20 years. I'm also a librarian. I'm the Technology and Medidata Services Manager at the Helen Plum Library in Lombard. And having worked in libraries a long time and benefited from the services that Rails provides, having the opportunity to serve on the board and be able to give back was important to me because I know that for organizations like this that depend on volunteers to give their time to serve and to help make these organizations work, it's important and happy to be here.
My name is Robin Helenthal. I'm from Peoria Public Library. I'm the Collection Development Services Manager there. I've worked in different types of libraries, from newspaper to special to church libraries. So I've got experience in different types of libraries. The reason, kind of why I wanted to be on the board because I wanted to, again, give back to what they've done for us in the past and the libraries I've worked at and also to volunteer and be part of, you know, helping other libraries, you know, get the things they need.
I'm Tom Stagg. I'm treasurer at the Alpha Park Public Library just outside Peoria. I'm also a student getting my LTA certification right now though my central college. And I got involved with the Rails Board to find out more about interlibrary loans because it seems like I always get books that have to come in on interlibrary loans. So thank Mark and staff for getting that done.
Hi, I'm Gwen Gregory. I'm now the Associate Dean for Collections Management at Northern Illinois University Libraries. I was previously on the Rails Board when I worked at the University of Illinois at Chicago, but then I had to leave because I started working at NIU, and there was already a board member from NIU. So I'm happy to come back. I've worked in academic and special libraries for some years in different states as well. And so I've been impressed at how in Illinois there's so much interlibrary cooperation, and there is also so many libraries. And I am a big fan of multi-type library cooperation, so I think Rails is a very important part of that. And I enjoy coming and sort of representing the academic library point of view, but also taking information from Rails back to the academic libraries to help them see how important it is and how they can be involved with all the libraries in the state and not just academic libraries.
Hi, I'm Monica Caldicott. I am a school librarian at Vernon Hills High School in Vernon Hills, Illinois, and I represent school libraries on the board. I joined the board, just as Gwen said, to bring back the good that Rails does to my fellow school librarians. It's my goal to really increase and raise the visibility of the services and the resources that Rails brings to school libraries and try to spread the word wide. And Gwen, I used to work as a part-time librarian at NIU, so I'm glad to be sitting next to you.
And then our staff, if you want to just very briefly introduce because we're going to do some staff introductions later.
My name is Emily Feister. You've already received 300 emails. I've been with Rails about 10 years. It's a great place to work. Joe Philippeck, Rails, Associate Executive Director. Of course, most of that time they'll spend as Director of Consulting and Continuing Education.
Sharon Swanson, Rails Finance Manager. I've been here a little over 11 years. In my prior life here, I did the accounting for four of the six LSAPS, well, then four of the six LSAPS that we now support. And I've been finance manager since last year in January.
I'm Alice Creason. I'm a trustee, Board Vice President of the Richland Park Public Library District in South suburban Chicago. But in my day job, I'm also an academic librarian at US University in Romeoville, where I'm the head of Library Technology and Technical Services. So I joined or ran for the Rails Board because there was very little representation from the southern suburbs at the time, and I wanted to sort of see if I could help fill that gap and represent my community and the communities around Richland Park.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Carroll. I am here in a capacity as Library Trustee for the Thomas Ford Memorial Library. I'm also a reference and programming librarian for the Oak Brook Public Library. And the reason I ran for Rails is more of a selfish reason is to learn. I think there's so much about Rails that I don't know. And I think it would be very helpful for me and my role as trustee seeing it from a different perspective rather than as a library employee to bring back all of the components that Rails offers, all of the library consortium. So really, it's really just for me to learn and share the knowledge I have in my capacity as trustee for my home library.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kathryn Anna Kuski. I'm Special Librarian, so I'm going to be filling a Special Library seat for the board. I run the library at Engineering Systems Incorporated, which is a national scientific and engineering investigation firm. I've been there just under two years, and I come before that from Public Library Administration. I was Deputy Director at Juliet Public Library and Farnborough Public Library before that. I spent 15 years or so in pinnacle library land from that consortium. And before that, I was a school librarian in Kentucky. So I wanted to contribute to Rails in whatever way is of most help. I love the new skills I'm learning as Special Librarian, but I have a lot, I think I could contribute in whatever way would be of most benefit, and I'm eager to do that. I haven't been on the Library System Board since it was TELSS. I was on the Urban Design Team though, so I'm very excited to be back in this room and sitting at this table. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hulianic, and I am here today as a trustee representative from the Villa Park Public Library. I'm just elected to my second term there. During my day job, I am the Executive Director of the Lagrange Public Library, so Thomas Ford, Lagrange, Urban Design. We're all folks to each other. I have been in libraries for, this is year 12. I have worked in libraries with a budget of, you know, $1 million. I've worked in libraries with a budget of $12 million. So I've been in a lot of different spaces. Previously, because I knew I wanted to be a director, I've worked in every library department, from circulation to technical services, build-to-makeers space, we want to talk about, we can do that. My main reason for being very interested in running for the board is the fact that I'm extremely passionate about trustee training. And I think that being a trustee who also has a background in libraries has been very enlightening both for myself and also for the people who are my fellow trustees at Villa Park. I learned from them, I feel, just as much as you. So yeah, I'm happy to participate in a capacity that allows us to do that here for the whole great state of Illinois.
Thank you so much. And I know you see along this wall, we've got some of the Rails staff. We are going to do an introduction of them a little further down the agenda, and they'll share a little bit more about what they do. But I do want to thank you all so much, both for your time and the efforts that you put in as part of this Rails Board process and for being here at this orientation meeting today. For those of you who are new to the board, even if you are pretty familiar with Rails, there's going to be a lot of information coming through that may not immediately make sense. Let me just say, in your time on the board, over time, all the pieces will begin to kind of fit together. So we're going to share a lot today, but we also want to make sure that there's lots of opportunity for questions and a lot of chances to ask about things that you're not immediately familiar with. So we'll take a lot of pauses throughout this meeting just to make sure that you have a chance to ask the questions that you need to ask. For those of you that have been here before, we've changed the format just a little bit this year. In the past, we offered a PowerPoint presentation for a general overview about Rails. And this year, we have Ola Bronski on board, who does a lot of our digital media and marketing. And Ola put together a video that essentially shows kind of the background of what Rails is in general. And so right now, we're going to watch that video, and then we'll take a minute to have some questions afterwards.
Hello, I'm Monica Harris, the Executive Director of Rails, the Reaching Across Illinois Library System. Welcome to the Rails Board. We're so pleased to have you join us. We developed this video to help new board members learn more about Rails, Illinois library systems in general, and service on the Rails Board. It can also serve as a good refresher for all Rails Board members. First, a bit of history. Prior to 1965, there was very little cooperation between libraries in Illinois. This all changed in August of that year when the Illinois System Act became law. This act encourages cooperation between all Illinois libraries. The act also led to the creation of library systems. By July 1967, there were 18 public library systems in Illinois. In 1983, the System Act was changed to recognize multi-type library systems. A multi-type system includes academic, public, school, and specialized libraries. By 1990, all Illinois library systems were multi-type except the Chicago Public Library System. The number of systems has decreased over the years, and there are now three systems in Illinois. On July 1, 2011, Rails was formed from the merger of five systems in the northern and western parts of the state. The Illinois Heartland Library System was formed from the merger of four systems in the southern portion. The third system is Chicago Public Library System, which includes the main Chicago Public Library building and all its branches. Rails serves libraries of all types across a 27,000-square-mile area. This includes academic, school, and specialized libraries in the city of Chicago. Rails is funded by an annual grant from the Illinois State Library through the Secretary of State's office. Our fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30. We submit an annual area and per capita grant application to the State Library by June 1 each year. The Rails Board reviews and approves the area and per capita grant application at their May meeting. This includes an operational plan highlighting our planned activities for the coming fiscal year and a budget. The operational plan is based on the Rails Strategic Plan, which you'll be hearing about later. Rails is governed by a 15-member board. The law dictates that eight of those board seats be filled by public library trustees. There is also a specific seat for academic, school, and specialized libraries, as well as four at-large seats that can be filled by public library trustees or staff from any type of library. The Rails Board job description outlines the general duties and requirements for board members. These include actively participating in 11 board meetings a year, establishing and approving Rails policies, hiring the Rails Executive Director, and acting as ambassadors for Rails by promoting our programs and services to staff and trustees at Rails member libraries. All board members sign the job description at the beginning of their service to indicate that they have read and understand it. The executive committee includes the board president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and one additional board member. Rails board members are also asked to serve on at least one committee. These committees sometimes change depending on the priorities of the current board. Rails has approximately 93 employees. About half of these employees are delivery staff. We have five service centers located across our area. Our Burr Ridge Service Center is our administrative headquarters. Our other service centers include Bowling Brook, Coal Valley, East Peoria, and Rockford. Rails serves approximately 1,268 member library agencies. A library agency is the main academic, public, or specialized library building or the main school district office. There are approximately 3,744 individual buildings, branches, and schools in Rails. School libraries represent the largest portion of our membership, though public libraries generally use Rails programs and services the most. We're working to even out that usage a bit more and to ensure that our members know about the different services that we offer. Board members can help with this effort as they act as ambassadors for Rails. All of the programs and services Rails offers flow from our strategic plan. The Rails Board approved our current strategic plan in January 2022. The Rails Strategic Plan includes our mission statement, which is "We Connect Libraries." It also includes our vision statement, which is "Thriveing libraries are essential to all who learn, live, or work in Illinois." The Rails Strategic Plan has four major goals. The first goal is Rails provides leadership in ensuring sustainable, equitable resource sharing for all member libraries. This goal includes a variety of resource-sharing initiatives. It includes delivery, which may be our most well-known service. It includes networking activities because Rails considers it important to share knowledge and best practices as well as library materials. It also includes the discounts we offer to member libraries, support for shared online catalogs, and a variety of e-initiatives, including Find More Illinois, E-Read Illinois, inky.org, and Explore More Illinois. You'll be hearing more about all of our services throughout the year. Strategic Plan Goal Two is Rails models best practices in equity, diversity, accessibility, and inclusion, or EDI for short. Rails considers it very important to model EDI best practices for our members and to support their EDI efforts. We offer a variety of continuing education opportunities focused on this topic. We have an EDI mailing list for our members to share what they are doing in this area. We also have a world language cataloging services program that is available to libraries statewide. Internally, we have a staff workplace climate team that plans activities to help Rails staff learn more about EDI. We also work hard to make sure we have as diverse a Rails Board as possible. This includes diversity in a number of areas, such as race, ethnicity, geographic area served, age, and library staff position. Strategic Plan Goal Three is Rails assists libraries in preparing for the future. This goal includes our very popular continuing education program. We offer a variety of in-person and virtual workshops for all levels of staff at all types of libraries. We also offer trustee training opportunities. This goal also includes our My Library Is initiative. This campaign is designed to help all libraries to tell their stories more effectively and to demonstrate their value so they will receive appropriate levels of funding and other support. Goal Three also includes a variety of other advocacy-related activities, such as our project to gather reliable data on school libraries so we can help ensure their survival, some consulting services, and other initiatives to keep our members up to date on the latest trends and challenges affecting libraries. Strategic Plan Goal Four is Rails leads alongside member libraries to develop and strengthen the Illinois library community and expand services to all. This goal is about partnerships and collaboration. Rails has many statewide partners, and we work with them on projects of interest to all Illinois libraries whenever possible. Goal Four also addresses the need to ensure that libraries of all types and sizes know about the programs and services Rails offers to benefit them. It also includes our efforts to achieve universal library service in Illinois. There are currently over 1 million Illinois residents who do not have access to library service, and we would like to see this change. This concludes our very brief introduction to Rails and what it means to be a member of the Rails Board. Rest assured, you will be hearing a lot more about these topics as your service on the board continues. I am always available to answer any questions you have at any time. Thank you again for being part of the Rails Board. We're so happy that you've joined us as we all work together to improve library service for all.
Well, thank you all. And so what I wanted to share with you is that each of you have received a folder, and this has a lot of information. Some of it we are going to go through in a bit more detail today, but some of the things that you heard about in that video are also covered here. Things like your Rails Board Member Job Description, which I know all of you have already signed off on, but as you want to revisit it throughout the year, really look at what your responsibilities are on the board and look at how to be the most responsive board member that you can be. We're going to discuss a lot of these topics today. Thank you, ma'am. I did want to make sure that you had an opportunity. Does anyone have any questions, comments, anything that was unfamiliar to you in the video or anything you wanted to ask about us? Okay. One thing we're excited about for the video is from time to time, we do have to make appointments to the board mid-year. And so instead of having to wait for some of this information until the next board orientation, we'll be able to share this. If you'd ever like to revisit that video, it is on the Rails or the Reaching Across Illinois Library System YouTube page. And so you can actually find it and review it there if you'd like. Okay. So with that, we do, as you probably noticed, have many of our staff members here in the building today. We just wanted the opportunity for them to briefly introduce themselves, talk a little bit about what they do at Rails, and then give you an opportunity if you have questions for them. So how about we start here at the table? I do want to remind any staff members that because of the fans in the room, it's quite loud. So if you could get a bit close to the microphones when it's your time to speak, it would be appreciated. Sharon, do you want to start?
I certainly can. So as I said before, my name is Sharon Swanson. I'm Finance Manager.
Sorry, I'm trying to talk louder.
It's a challenge. Yeah. I am so sorry, everyone. As I said before, my name is Sharon Swanson. I am Finance Manager here at Rails, so I supervise the finance department. I work with Monica to develop the budget that we present to the board. I've been here 11 and a half years now. In my prior life, I did the accounting for the four LSAPS, the four of the six LSAPS that we now support, one no longer existing. And I supervise a team of four accountants, two of which, one does the accounting for Rails, one does the accounting for the two LSAPS that we still do that service for, and then an accounts receivable person and an accounts payable person. The person who is elected as treasurer will be receiving emails to approve use of that person's signature stamp, which I know Karen Voitich is nominated. And from time to time, you'll be interacting with those folks as well. And basically, that's an overview of what finance does. We also, in addition to supporting those two LSAPS with the accounting duties, we also support the Illinois Library Presents Program that is very active and I believe recently received an ILA award. And we also support the Electronic Content Consortium as well through billings and paying member invoices and such. And we also act as the mailing address for the LACOMI group. So we have branched out to a little bit more support for our staff. And in addition, I myself am treasurer on the Limerick Board, the insurance cooperative that serves libraries. So just a little plug for Limerick. In addition to the insurance, in addition to the health insurance program which we participate in, which was just renamed to HIP, the Health Insurance Plan from SHIP and FIP, they also offer an unemployment, an unemployment insurance cooperative that several libraries in the state of Illinois participate in. So just a little plug as board member for that.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good morning again, Joe Philippeck. I'm going to talk about, a little bit about CE consulting. So CE consulting at Rails began as a system service in November 2013. We're currently Department of Three, the Director position, and then two CE and consulting specialist positions. As I think you heard on the video, the way in which we deliver the CE to our members is varied and takes the form largely of webinars, online workshops, and then in-person workshops.[1644.99]
and takes the form largely of webinars, online workshops, and then in-person workshops. And of course, knowing that so many of our libraries rely on part-time staff, varied schedules, never a convenient date and time for anything, we record and archive as much as we can so that our members are able to engage in that content when it is convenient for them. The topics that we try to focus on for CE, I would describe as being member-driven, but is probably a combination of the sort of traditional topics you think of, such as management topics, cataloging, customer service, readers advisory, et cetera. And then topics that are more responsive to sort of recent demands, whether that's a pandemic, legislation that maybe is impacting libraries, or more recent phenomenon like First Amendment audits that occur at libraries and trying to provide education and resources that are going to support our member libraries in that area. And then I would say really on the sort of consulting side of things, it's a combination of sort of structured services, which would include our very fruitful relationship with HR Source, who provides HR consulting for libraries, particularly public libraries, and a lot of the training that they do for us, again, to really help inform and resource our libraries in that area. Services like our OMA and FOIA hotline so that libraries can connect with an attorney when they have a question related to the Open Meetings Act or Freedom of Information Act request. And then there's just really the unstructured sort of email phone calls that we get daily from our members who have questions and are looking for guidance. And sometimes it's questions around best practices, policy questions. We get a lot of questions about non-resident services. Those are calls and emails we get on a daily basis and try to respond to. And it's really beyond the department, but it's Monica and other department heads. But that is a really important service. It is a way for us to support our members. And when it comes down to it, whether we're talking about consulting or CE, the goal is really, of course, to support our member libraries, to resource them, to support them so that they are equipped and better prepared to serve their communities to the best of their abilities. So that is that department in our job.
Emily, do you want to just?
You'll hear a lot more from me later on.
Okay. Or even if you want to be next to Sharon here at the.
My name is Mark Hatch. I am the Director of Facilities and Delivery. I'll start with facilities first. My apologies for the extremely warm building that we have here. The one day that our HVAC controller decided to crash on us today. So we're waiting for technicians to get out here sooner, as soon as they can. So we do have four different delivery hubs that's along with this building. As Monica materially, this is our corporate office here. And then we also have a building in Bolingbrook, Rockford, East Peoria, and Coal Valley. So those are all of our delivery hubs. I'm not going to talk a lot about delivery today because next month I'll be doing a report to you guys. You know, where we'll really get down into the nitty-gritty, talking about our volume and our process and things of that nature. But in the interim, I encourage you to go into the delivery webpage. It's a lot of good information out there, you know, that the libraries, that's designed primarily for the library to understand exactly what they're entitled to as far as number of deliveries, when we have our delivery counts and things of that nature. I know everyone hates those delivery counts, but it's a necessary evil that we actually have to do, you know, just to get our volume, our annual volume for the year. But once again, I'm Mark Hatch. And like I said, I'll give you a lot of good details next month, you know, related to deliveries. And my apologies for the one building.
Hi, I'm Leila Heat, Director of Library Resources and Programs. And I don't mind. So anyway, so my area encompasses deals and discounts, which is where we do advantageous pricing for our members. And I've been here since 2019, and we're seeing some growth, quite a bit of growth in that program. And the other interesting piece of that is that it also reflects on our efforts in data because it is such a data-driven area with the finances and figuring out how to have these things work across our state or across Rails. So it's also been, I think, an area that's showcased or highlighting some interesting ways of finding efficiencies across the state as we're moving these programs. I do have some statewide programs as well in my area, and I have a staff of three library specialists who work in these areas. And you'll be hearing from them throughout the year. So we do e-content, so that's our E-Read Illinois program. We have about 900 libraries that participate in that program across the state. We also have Explore More Illinois, which is our cultural past program. And we have also hundreds of libraries participating in that. And in June, we were so pleased to welcome Chicago Public Library to that program, making it a true statewide program. In addition, we have Cur Online High School and inky.org, which is a publishing platform. So welcome all of you, and we'll look forward to talking to you more this year.
Hi, I'm Dan Bostrom. My title is Member Engagement Manager. I'm part of the Communications Team here at Rails. Some of the responsibilities that I have are, I do site visits around Rails. We serve 27,000 square miles, so I'm not one of the, I'm just one of the people that does site visits. You'll see other people on the road, Joe, Monica, other staff members who are out to member libraries. But a lot of my responsibility is to kind of come up with an engagement plan to meet with them, talk with them. I also organize a lot of networking events. We held a fun event at Gwen's Library just a few weeks ago, actually. I'm also involved heavily in the My Library Is campaign. One of my responsibilities is to lead and organize the grant project, the My Library Is Grants. We gave away around $80,000, mostly to school libraries this year. It's going to be changing a little bit next year, but that's a lot of fun. I work in a lot of collaborative projects with internally and externally. Right now, we're working on something for the school libraries called the Illinois School Library Workers Symposium. Long name, but it's going to be a really fun event. It's going to serve a lot of folks who might not be in the fold right now in terms of membership in ILE or Rails or other library-serving organizations. So we're very excited about that. Something I wanted to tell all of you all as board members, something I tell everyone who I go do site visits for is a couple of things. Make sure you're subscribed to the Rails e-news.
Yes.
If you're not, we need to change that soon. Make sure you know your L2 information. Make sure you're able to log in and access it. There are parts of the Rails website, which I'm sure you'll find out from the IT team that are behind an L2 login wall, so take a look at that. Sign up for all of our email lists. We have over 40 different job and topic-specific email lists that you can take advantage of. And that's a great place to monitor the conversation about what is happening in libraries. And then, you know, just feel free to come to any networking event. You can always sign up for things that are happening around Rails. We have around 80 networking groups that we liaison with. We don't run them. We just help serve them. LECOMI is a great example. You can always attend those events. And just to find out what's happening, that's a great way to just get your pulse on what is happening around Rails. So yeah, that's me. Thank you very much.
Morning, everyone. My name is Ann Slaughter. I'm the Director of Technology Services here at Rails. I've been here for nine and a half years. And before that, I worked in public libraries. So I'm a little too cheap. I forget to stop when I'm trying to keep it brief. So to keep it, to try and keep it as brief as possible. The, as you might imagine, the IT department is in my areas of responsibility. The IT Manager Wesley Smith reports to me. And there are four additional employees in that department doing, maintaining everything you see here and other traditional IT services as well as developer working on custom applications for internal processes like HR as well as delivery statistics and all the tracking of things that the delivery drivers do out on the road. I also oversee the support and services that we provide to the LSAPS, which is a word that you will learn if you are not familiar with it yet. It's a local library system automation program. We have six of those groups that share catalog software. They range in size from six to 150 libraries, and the combined total of members served is about a third of Rails libraries, mostly public libraries. And we provide, we support those organizations with two grant programs that I manage. One of them supports their own operations, and one of them goes to libraries to support their membership growth, the cost of joining. I also am the primary staff liaison for the Rails Board Consortium Committee, which you'll obviously hear more about. And one of those organizations, RSA, the largest one, has the, we provide them staffing services, which is, you know, kind of a long story of the history of LSAPS and system relationships. But we do provide that organization's staffing. So RSA is currently a Department of Rails, and the manager reports to me. The cataloging services, oh, seriously, talk to me. The cataloging services manager also reports to me. She does very highly in-demand training year-round for our members as well as providing the world language cataloging service. Findmore Illinois is also one of my areas. That's an interlibrary loan platform that connects multiple catalogs. And we are currently working on a project with the hopes to automate as many libraries as possible that don't have catalog software currently. And we do have more of those in Rails than, you know, you would like to see. So we have two staff that work in that department, and I'm also heavily involved in those operations. Finally, I also oversee L2, which is, as Dan mentioned, it's our directory and continuing education calendar. That is a statewide service that we manage on behalf of the state and includes a statewide advisory committee. And I also have been spending a lot of time lately on digital equity and broadband expansion efforts. I serve as the liaison to Illinois, between Illinois libraries and the Broadband Advisory Council, which is a part of the Department of Economic Opportunity in the state government. And there is a lot of, as you probably know, federal and state funding flowing towards broadband access and expansion for residents and anchor institutions like libraries, and a lot of digital equity issues that go along with that involving, you know, the abilities of individuals to have the skills and equipment that they need to be able to access, you know, life online. So that is me in a nutshell.
Hi, everyone. I've met some of you already today with your board portraits. I'm Ola Gransky. I'm the Digital Marketing and Communication Specialist here. I do our photography and video editing in-house, as well as sometimes I go with Dan on site visits and go out and take photos of our member libraries to post on social media. So if you guys are active on social media, I would urge you to follow us on all of our channels. And anytime you can like or share our post really helps to amplify our voice for our member libraries as well. Nice to meet you all.
Nice job on the video. Well, and so this is an opportunity. If you have a question or if there's anything that you'd like to note as the staff's here, now's your chance. So anybody have anything that you want to ask about or note? One thing I will point out is that we have a Service of the Month and a Board Development Topic in every board meeting. And so you will hear from all of these folks again throughout the year. They'll give you a much more in-depth view of what they do and some of the innovations and things that have happened in their departments throughout the year. So we just wanted everybody to be able to introduce themselves and give a very brief overview. But you will definitely hear more about all of these areas throughout the year. Okay. Well, yes, yes.
I just wanted to let everybody know, Dan's networking events are awesome to go to.
Yeah, they're open to all of you all. Please don't feel shy about signing up for those. If there's a networking event that's happening around and you want to go to it, you should go to it. It's not just for Illinois libraries. Tom has been very gracious enough to attend a lot of those.
But they're fun. They're fun. It's a great networking opportunity.
Yeah. We have, I'll say, we have a really fun one next week. We're going and we're actually helping lead a school library that hasn't been leaded in 10 years. So it's the first time we've ever done something like this. It's more of a service volunteer opportunity than anything, but we're going to see how it goes.
Yeah. Always thinking of new ways to connect folks and get them involved with Rails. It's great.
We have a couple more staff members who have joined us.
Yes. I'd like to introduce, well, they can introduce themselves. We have four members, five members with me of the added staff. And we, there, you will hear from all of them because everyone has committees that they staff and are in charge of. And, Ryan, go ahead.
My name is. Yeah, that's my problem. I'm a soft speaker, but I'll try to project. I'm the newest addition to the administrative team since March. I'm super happy to be here, so thank you, everybody, if it's possible. And I work with United Universal Service Committee and Policy Committee.
Yes. My name is Stacy Palmasano. I am a Special Projects Coordinator. I've been here at Rails for four years, where I was an Administrative Assistant prior to the position I have now. I am the manager for the Equity Diversity Inclusion Board Committee as well as, there is a Findmore Illinois consulting project I'm working on. And there's, I can't remember. I can't remember what I worked on. I fell on the spot now. Any, I, no, I didn't. Yeah. Equity Diversity Inclusion. Yeah. Thank you.
I'm Mary Kate Murray. I started at Rails in January after five years at a public library. Very happy to be here, and I work on the Resource Sharing Committee and the Consortium Committee.
I'm Karen Boyer, and I assist the Empathy Committee and also E-Read Illinois and the Delivering Committee.
Thank you. Yes. Emily said you will hear again from these folks because you will see them in your committee meetings, and they are a great resource if you have questions about Rails.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so what we're going to do now is just go briefly through your folder. So if you want to pull your folder out, we're going to start on the left side of your folder. And we'll just kind of briefly go through this. If you have questions, you're more than welcome to ask them, but there will also be some time for that at the end if you want to hold. So it's up to you. So as we mentioned first, the Rails Board Member Job Description is in place. If you haven't signed it yet and you're a new board member, we will be approaching you for your signature just to make sure that you acknowledge that you understand the responsibilities of being on the Rails Board. Next is your Rails Board and Committee Member Information, including a lot of our procedures around attendance and travel reimbursement. We will talk a little bit more about that later in the agenda in terms of some of these pieces. But this is here for you if you want to revisit it. We also have something, this is from our attorneys at Ansel Glink. So Julie Tappendorf created this document, which is 10 Things to Know About OMA, which stands for the Open Meetings Act. This is the law that we have to follow in order to make sure that our meetings are happening in the way that they need to happen. And all the things we talked to you about with in-person requirements are related to OMA. So this gives a little bit more information from Julie just about what those definitions mean and how we can talk together. As you heard both Dan and Ann talk, we talked about L2, which is our Library Directory and Learning Calendar, our LibraryLearning.org. Your L2 account really gives you access to many, many, many things on the Rails website. So if you do not have an L2 account right now, we want to encourage you to get one. There's lots of information, including much of our Deals and Discounts page, that cannot be viewed without that L2 login. And so you want to have a login and be logged in to the website in order to view some of those things. If you need any help at all, we can help you get signed up for L2 and make sure that you have that account and have that access. Yes, of course.
Do I want to log in with my work as a librarian? Or do I want to log in as a trustee?
You want to log in as trustee because you will be, then you can get to the board portal as well.
Yes.
For the Rails website. It's just, I think.
The reason I asked was I got a prompt to create an L2 account.
I can chime in on that. You should only have one L2 login, but then you have several affiliations inside L2. Have your personal or your work library affiliation, while you have your Rails Board affiliation on the same login. So we, a question will be talked afterward.
Maybe I'll want to talk to you after, because I can get an email from L2 saying create an account. And I'm like, I already have an account.
If you have an account already, you just need to add the board affiliation to your.
Great question, Jean. And what, I realized, Ryan, that we didn't introduce you. Do you want to just say hi and say who you are? The man in the corner. That's right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ryan Hubble. I work in IT. I'm generally in charge of helping general staff, the board, with all the meetings. I'm generally the first person who answers the call when you call IT. I work alongside our network admin, our server admin, our boss, and also our app developer. So, you know, but generally, they're more specialized, but I kind of, you know, handle more staff questions. Can I try any questions while I'm here?
And one question is, because I had an L2 account before I was a Rails board member. So now I have my, you know, public library, and then I have my, so you want us to go ahead and use our Rails board one?
Yeah, we can combine the accounts.
Okay, so I just click on that one and send it up?
Yeah, we should be able to, you know, you should only have one login, I believe.
One login, yeah.
One login. And then under your login, you can see all the different affiliations. But if you have multiple affiliations, that's perfect. That's what it's supposed to be. But you should have like one email address and one password. That should be good for everything.
And then we can just click either one.
It is not the case, Les. No, we can help you out.
And we will, so following this meeting, when we're done with this orientation piece here, Ryan and then also Galen, if necessary, will be available to do things like troubleshoot your L2 accounts or if you have any other technical needs, they are available to help. Ryan is so patient. I will say I've worked at a lot of places, and Ryan's really, really great to work with. So just want to encourage you all to reach out to them if you need help with anything. Okay. I very briefly will just have you look over the charges from our Rails committees. So as you saw in the video, and I know I've talked with each of you individually at various points about the committees within Rails, we will also be talking about the draft committee schedule later in our afternoon meeting. That'll kind of go through where people are sort of slotted for the moment. But we do have some additional potential openings on some of our committees if you're interested. So this kind of goes through our separate committees. They all have different charges. Most of them have been operating for at least three years now. So they're all relatively well-established committees. They meet on different schedules. And so I just want to kind of. And so I just want to kind of briefly go through them. So our Reals Advocacy Committee that you see first can see there's a very specific number of committee members that are required from each of our library types, as well as having multiple trustees. We do have a lot of Reals Board members in these roles in the current makeup of our advocacy committee. This group is currently meeting monthly and they talk about a lot of issues that are important to libraries in general, as well as some of the legislative concerns that come up, both on a federal and state issue. We also always report on things that are happening at the Illinois Library Association's Public Policy Committee through this committee. So it is one opportunity to hear more about what's here. One thing I should note is that even if you do not serve on the committee, you are always welcome to attend. These are all public meetings. And so if you just have an interest in seeing what's happening at the work of the committee, that is always available to you. And Monica, I saw your hand raised.
Can you just, so this, the requirement of membership, is that also specified by law in the way that this board membership is? Or is this just current practice of Reals?
I believe it's just current practice, but it is within all of our charges that, that you must be a Reals member in order to serve as a voting member of the committee. We do have ex officio members who come from outside of the Reals membership at some points.
Okay.
And the exception to that is the consortia committee, because some of those folks who are executive directors of consortia are not technically Reals members. And so there, there are, but those are also stipulated in the charge.
Okay.
Good question. Is there anything else about that piece that we wanted to ask? I just want to briefly, so our Reals Consortium Committee also represents, as Anne Slatter was up here and talking about, our various LSAPs that are represented throughout our committee. We also have participation from some that are not within the Reals Member Service Area or exclusively within the Reals Member Service Area. So we have some ex officio participation from Heartland, as well as Harley. And they primarily talk about issues that are important to consortia and consortia membership related to resource sharing. And that group meets quarterly. The Reals Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee is our newest committee of the Reals Board. This was established in 2020. Was a, we started doing a lot more EDI work at that time and it was suggested from the board that we have a board committee that was focused on this issue. They've done a lot of really incredible work, including bringing together a lot of projects and they've done a lot of training. They're in sort of a new phase now because this group decided that they wanted people to only serve, with the exception of the Reals Board members, to have individual members only serve one full term before cycling off in order to give more people from the Reals membership the opportunity to serve because we've had so much interest. We recently put out a call for members and the group has met to talk about who is going to be coming on to that. We should be making those appointments shortly, but we had about 67 self-nominations to serve on our various committees here at Reals. So very vibrant interest in serving on some of these committees over the Reals membership. A Reals Executive Committee is the committee that's made up of the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and one additional director that's elected by the Board of Directors. That group does not meet regularly and how often they meet really depends on the activity of the board. In the past, they often meet in order to do appointments for a new board member that might come on board or to do work with the hiring of the executive director. Anything else you would add about?
Those were the most recent things, appointments and hiring.
Yeah, so sometimes they meet quite frequently. Other times, there's not as much need for them to meet, but that's the, the executive committee piece. And next we have the Policy Committee. This is also a group that in, in the past has not always met super regularly unless there was a need. But we're doing a lot of policy revision this year and that is in part because we want to go through our Personnel Manual, which is, is a lot. We blasted that in 2020. And a lot has changed since 2020, both in terms of Reals individual situation and then the world at large. We are looking to do a full equity review of the policy manual this year with our EDI consultant. And we also want to make sure that we've incorporated other elements that have happened in Reals, including our remote work policy into the rest of the Personnel Manual this year. That is chaired by the Vice President of the Board. And then the Reals Resource Sharing Committee is our other committee that is specifically devoted to resource sharing. The things that happen in this resource sharing group are primarily composed of the Reals membership at large. So as you saw in the group, that we have many, many libraries that are represented by our consortia. We have many libraries that are not within our consortia. And so programs that more are focused on the Reals membership at large tend to have more discussion in our Reals Resource Sharing Committee. So often issues of delivery at large, issues of our Deals and Discounts Program, Find More Illinois, things like that often come through our Resource Sharing Committee. And then finally is our Universal Service Committee. So as you saw in the video, there are 1 million unserved people in the state of Illinois who are not represented by a library district. This group's charge is to continue to try to find solutions to get more service for those folks. And they have done some really creative and incredible things over the years. And this is one of the groups that we are looking for some more board participation. A lot of our people who left the board last year were serving on this committee. So if you have an interest in that, we would love to hear from you. Okay, any questions about any of that? Okay. Yes, yes.
The EDI committee, I noticed in the video, you had added accessibility. Is that also part of this committee? Is that?
Yes, accessibility was added during our strategic planning process that was adopted in 2022. That came straight from the membership who really wanted to see accessibility included in our discussion. And so that is part of what is discussed in that committee. Absolutely. Yes.
Related to the L2 question earlier, your affiliations have already been added by Mary Kate Murray.
Wonderful. Thank you. Before we move on to the next thing, I also wanted to note Mark Hatch let me know that there is now a technician on site. And so the temperature in the building should begin to drop. And so hopefully we will all be more comfortable soon. So I just wanted to give you an update on that as well. Okay, so I'm not going to go in any detail through our system and area per capita grant application, but you will see it's quite extensive here and it's really good reading if you haven't had a chance. The board does approve this towards the end of the fiscal year, and so you will see next year. So this gives you an opportunity to look at that. I did want to offer for you some potential highlights of our operating plan, which you'll also see included in that form. And so I wanted to just take a moment to present some of those to you today. This is not by any means an exhaustive list of what is included in that operating plan, and I would encourage you to go through that in some more detail at your leisure. But we recently did a program for the Prairie Cat Delegates Assembly and shared some highlights from our operating plan. And I just wanted to be able to share those with some of you today who are joining us in the new fiscal year. So if you will give me just a moment, I'm just going to share those with you now. Okay. So what I'm focusing on here are not just things that are specifically noted within that operational plan, but also big things that we have coming up for this coming year. And one of them is sitting here at our table. We have a brand new associate executive director. I think that Joe, is this your third day officially? So we're very happy to have Joe on board. We'll talk about this at our afternoon meeting as well. But there are staff transitions. So as I was an internal hire, I moved up throughout the organization. We had to be able to replace me. Mary Witt, our very long-term marketing and communications director, has just recently retired. You may have seen, we have posted for that position. And so we'll be hiring for her position, as well as we expect to post for a replacement for Joe in the next few weeks. So we are having a lot of staff transitions at the executive team leadership level. And in the meantime, we have a lot of staff that are juggling multiple roles and doing multiple things. We really expect this to be a year of transition as we try to make sure that we are fulfilling the needs that we need to fulfill and that we're really doing things in the best way that we can for 2023. So with that, we do expect, as we make some of these changes, to look again at our organizational chart, make sure that things are aligned in the way that they should. Any organizational chart approvals come through the board. So you will, as, as we propose these changes, you will see them and be asked to consider them in future meetings. We are also, through our Policy Committee, going to be developing a succession plan this year. This was a suggestion from one of our board members that we have a more formalized succession plan that can really say who does what in the event that someone is not available to do their position. So this is something that we're going to be looking at formalizing this year as well. We will also be looking to do an in-person staff day. This is for fiscal year 2024. We'll actually be doing it in 2023 in the fall and that approval will also come through the board probably as soon as next month. We have not done an in-person staff day since 2019. And because of all of the changes that happened through COVID, we'd not explored that. But part of what I did in my first few months at Reals as executive director was go around and visit all of our locations and talk to our staff. And in particular, from our delivery staff at all of our locations, they really requested the return of an in-person staff day. It makes them feel much more connected to the staff at large and gives them a chance to connect with delivery staff at other locations. So we felt this was a really important thing for us to pursue this year. So it's something you'll be hearing more about soon. We're also doing a full benchmarking by HR source to look all over our job descriptions. We're going to make sure our job descriptions are updated and that they're reflecting what work is actually happening within our departments. And we are also having them benchmarked by HR source. They have not been benchmarked at large since 2020. So again, a pretty significant period of time with a lot of change since then. And then our IT infrastructure, we've got a lot of big IT projects happening this year. There's a big recabling project that's happening. They're doing a lot of security work. And so you'll be hearing more about that from them this year, but a lot of big things in terms of internal staff work you'll hear about. We are also super excited about the $5 million that was included in Secretary Genulius's budget for fiscal year 2024. That will allow for a statewide online resource program that will support every resident of Illinois with a shared suite of online resources. We were one of only two states in the entire country that did not have a shared online resource program. And other states that we have talked to have said that it's similar, like per capita numbers for what we're spending right now with our population, that this could save Illinois upwards of $95 million in terms of what individual libraries are spending on these programs. Of course, putting this program together is a huge project and will require a lot of input from the systems, as well as from Illinois libraries at large. The State Library does have this under their umbrella now that it's been included in Secretary Genulius's budget, but they have communicated with us that they are currently modeling this on programs from Michigan and New York specifically, as well as looking at other programs. And they will be asking for direct input and discussion from all of the systems, especially at their ISLAC meetings. ISLAC is the Illinois State Library's Advisory Council, from which I attend all of those meetings. And so we're very excited to see where this is going. Reals has been a huge booster of this for the last few years. And so it was really exciting to see this included in the Secretary's new budget. Delivery is, of course, one of our most popular and important services. One of the biggest things we have for this year is that we need a lot of new delivery vehicles. Our fleet is aging. It, because of supply chain issues, it has been really difficult to get vehicles with the specs that we need. So we did budget for quite a few vehicle replacements this year and expect to do that again next year as part of our capital plan. But we are still in the process of trying to identify someone who can give us those under the state contract. Mark works on that all the time, but this is a very high priority for us. And we've also implemented a new mobile app that was actually designed by our app developer within IT that helps us to do a lot more automated tracking and delivery volume and functions and helps us, again, as we try to create the most efficient maps possible as we can for our delivery team, having a strong understanding of what they're doing and how much they're moving day to day helps us to make those changes as we need to. Our library programs, you're going to hear a ton more about this through the year. And as you probably saw in your afternoon board packet, we often report on changes and things that are happening in these programs. These are primarily under Leila Heath, who you met, and then with Find More under Ann. So our Deals and Discounts Program allows us to negotiate for discounts and economies of scale for our libraries at large. Leila can negotiate discounts and then libraries can then just take advantage of those discounts. This is a great one to, if you're logged into L2, to look and see what the current options for our Deals and Discounts Program are. This program has seen so much growth. I think we had about $750,000 worth of deals and discounts from our member libraries in 2019 and we're up to about $3 million this year. So it's really a lot of growth, which results in a lot of savings for libraries. Our E-Read Illinois program, it's hard to believe, but it's 10 years old this year. We're celebrating our decade of E-Read where libraries can sign on for the E-Read program and get access to eBooks. One exciting thing for that is we do all of the administration and management of that program. And everything that libraries pay as part of their fees goes directly into the collection. So any fees that they pay as part of E-Read just gets their books for them. In addition to that, Reals put an additional $100,000 into the E-Read budget this year for materials that are for K through 12 students and Spanish language materials, because that's what we kept hearing from our members that we really needed to get more of in order to meet the needs of their communities. So in addition to what our members contribute to that program, we're investing more in that as well. Explore More Illinois, I'm going to talk about some more this afternoon, but a lot of really exciting growth, especially in the last month around Explore More Illinois. Chicago Public Library has come on and we've added a lot of attractions within the city of Chicago that previously were not available within Explore More Illinois. That's our Attractions Program where it goes directly to the communities that our libraries serve. They have access to it absolutely for free and they can get discounts on attending various recreational and educational museums and other types of attractions throughout the state. And then Find More Illinois, which is our shared catalog solution. This has also seen a lot of growth over the last few years with a lot of libraries joining. It's meant to be an opportunity for libraries to share material through a shared online catalog and that then they can have access to things outside of their regular collection. Continues to grow and we will share a lot more about some of those things, including the, the Verso integration that would potentially be an ILS system that is available to libraries that are unautomated and under automated. Equity Diversity and Inclusion is, as you saw in our video, the second goal of our strategic plan. We've got a lot of exciting things coming up in this next year, including the addition of an asynchronous training program for EDI from a group called Freedom Lifted. You may have heard of that because the Public Library Association offers a discount for that program. In the last year, we did a EDI training-focused cohort where we brought on 50 Reals members who could do advanced training and EDI over, was it an eight-month period, Joe? And so they could have the chance to meet with each other and learn together. We had a great result from that program, but we wondered if we could have something that was even more expansive, so even more people who wanted to participate in these programs could. We had to look at things like whether one or more people from individual libraries could even participate in that program together. What the Freedom Lifted Program will allow for is an asynchronous program where anyone who wants to do this training, it's a four-to-five-hour training that's specifically focused on public libraries, but should be relevant to libraries in general. So EDI work, it's facilitated by Mia Henry, who's a really exciting and really thoughtful facilitator of EDI trainings in libraries. And we should have that coming later this fall. We also are planning an EDI training for trustees specifically. One of the things our committee has talked about a lot is that it's very hard to get these things moving when you don't have buy-in from your administration or your governance in the form of your trustees in terms of understanding issues of EDI. So we are working with our consultant, Biz Lindsay Ryan, to develop training for trustees specifically. One great thing about Biz is she also serves as a trustee herself for the school board in Evanston. So she really understands the kinds of issues that trustees are concerned about. And so that she's developing that training with, with trustees in mind. We are also, as I mentioned, doing a full equity audit of our Reals Personnel Manual, also with Biz Lindsay Ryan, and will, of course, do continued work from the Reals EDI Board Committee and the Internal Climate Team. Finally, in advocacy, we have an advocacy committee, obviously, that does a lot of this work. And in Reals, we'll also be looking to continue to support the Illinois State Library on House Bill 2789. That's the banning book bans legislation that you've probably heard a lot about this year. And the License to Read Act, which is specifically focused on Secretary Genulius having the ability to negotiate more reasonable terms for eBooks directly from publishers. We'll hear more about that throughout the year and are trying to find ways to make sure that we can support and amplify their message throughout the Reals membership. And as I said, I also serve as an ex officio on the ILA Public Policy Committee, where we hear a lot about these legislation pieces as they come through. Tom's actually serving on that committee this year, which is wonderful. And so we have a lot of, of eyes on what's happening through that program as well. We also offer a lot of grant support for our members, mostly in the form of these four grants, or my library is grants are focused on visibility for libraries and them specifically being able to tell their own stories of what they do. Over the last couple of years, these have been focused specifically on availability to our school library members who really have a lot of needs in order to be able to make sure that they're sharing why and what it is that they do with their communities. We also offer a series of continuing education grants. This is where libraries can offer a training for libraries. And as long as they make it available to others within the library, the Reals Library membership, they have the possibility of having some of those training programs supported by Reals through this grant process. We also have a catalog membership grant, which is to try to encourage resource sharing and libraries who are considering joining an LSAP or a consortia. We can provide additional financial support for them as they consider making that choice. We can provide additional financial support for them as they consider making that choice in support of resource sharing in Illinois. And then our LSAP support grants, where Rails gives a significant amount of money to our consortia to help them with their operations, as they do a lot in support of resource sharing throughout the year. Finally, we do a lot of collaboration with statewide partners, and this has been a big focus, I would say, over the last year, is to really continue to try to shore up these relationships, because we are all doing really valuable work in Illinois. And the more that we can coordinate our efforts and not duplicate them, the more work we'll be able to do. So a few years ago, we got started with an IL partnership. This is a monthly meeting that takes place specifically focused on the issues of school libraries in Illinois and some leadership from the Illinois Library Association, IL, the Illinois State Library, our sister system to the south, Heartland, Rails. And now, just very recently, we've actually added some support from Carley, and we had a representative from ISB, which is not organized in the same area of state government as we are. But of course, they're very focused on issues of education, who was able to join us as we talk about some of the issues around school libraries. Some really exciting projects have come out of that group, including the last thing on this list, which is the Regional Response Team. This is a new initiative that's meant to get volunteers from around Illinois who are interested in doing things to support libraries that are facing materials challenges. So what they can do is someone can potentially offer their opportunity to write an op-ed or to show up at a board meeting or do something that they were interested in and share what region they're from. And then if there's a request that goes out to this group in the area, then people can respond to that and have the ability to share that. So that is really still in early development, but this is based off a model that happened out of New Jersey, and someone brought that to the partnership, and we worked at a way to make that happen. ILA, that's under the umbrella of ILA, but IL, Heartland, and Rails are all very involved in making that move forward. Joe Philippa, in particular, has done a lot of work on that program. We are also doing a lot with broadband and digital equity initiatives. I'll talk a little bit more about some exciting developments on that front that happened just yesterday in Champaign. But there's a lot of money for broadband this year, as many of you may have heard of. Digital equity and broadband are huge national issues at the federal level. And so we want to make sure that we have our eyes on this for what Rails can do to support libraries, because libraries are truly the original digital navigators. We're the ones who are often helping people who don't have those kinds of digital resources, and we should be in on those conversations. ISLAC, which is the Advisory Council meeting that I mentioned earlier. We are also looking at a Heartland and Rails joint staff meeting. This is currently scheduled for August 29th in Springfield. It's the first time our leadership has met together in a decade to have a formalized meeting. And so we're meeting together to talk about what the systems do, talk about our own operational plans, and then how we can work together moving forward. And we are looking at the possibility of having a joint board meeting in 2024. So the possibility for Heartland and Rails boards to meet together, which I think would be a great opportunity to share what we're doing and continue to collaborate. There are also regular meetings with Chicago Public Library. We meet regularly with Commissioner Chris Brown there. He's been a wonderful partner for Rails, and that's been a really exciting development over the last couple of years. We meet with Carley and Anne Craig, with Leslie Bednar at Heartland, with Cindy Robinson at ILA, and I also meet regularly with Greg McCormick from the State Library, just to talk about the things that are happening at Rails and how we can support one another. That is kind of some of the highlights from this upcoming operational plan. But as I said, I definitely encourage you to go in and take a look at some of the things that are happening in that plan. And if you have questions or there's other things you'd like to see, I would love to be able to answer them. So any questions about anything we just talked about here? Well, thank you for listening to me talk. So long about all of that. Briefly, I just want to share, I think I did miss something that's at the back. Okay, so you've got your expense reimbursement request form. This is an important one, because if you need to be able to get mileage requests, we can do that for you. If you're driving to these board meetings, we can reimburse you for your mileage under our policy. But if you need any help in filling this out, contact Emily. We'll be able to help you figure out how to go through this process. This form does actually need to be done in Excel. We've recently updated this, so it's not just in paper anymore. So we will send you the link, but this is just to give you a sense of what this looks like, okay? Any questions about the expense reimbursement form? Yes, Ryan?
For everyone to know that, prior to that, we do update that form. So if you are, it's the newest form from Emily. We do change the mileage for, you know, dollars per mile as the state updates. Always get the newest one, yeah.
Thank you, Ryan. There's also a conflict of interest form in the back here and an acronym glossary. We often have people, especially in our trustee roles, who are joining us kind of from outside of the library world as their day job. And librarians love acronyms. We try really hard to not use acronyms and to spell things out. But if you want to take a look at what some of these things are, we've tried to include some definitions of each. Okay, so on your right side of your folder, this is a brand-new, we're really proud of this, actually, description of some of the things that are happening within Rails. Really explains a lot of our programs and how we're working moving forward. Every single Rails member library is going to receive this very soon. So either they will receive it through delivery, or if they're libraries who don't regularly receive delivery, they're actually going to get a copy through the mail. Our admin team has been working tirelessly on getting all of those actually individually addressed and ready to send out. But this is just to make sure that all of our members have a sense of what we do in Rails and how they can be supported by us. We've also included a copy of the 2022 to 25 Strategic Plan. As we're walking around the building, I will show you, we actually have a brand-new mural just opposite the bathrooms that also details all of the pieces of the strategic plan. And as we add some things to it each year, we will also add to that mural. And so we're really excited to be able to share that with you all as well. We've included a copy of the bylaws, which are important for you to have access to and look at, as well as the admin code rules. That is a little dry, but can explain a lot of the reasoning for why we do what we do in legislation, as well as the administrative code, which fulfills a similar role, and the Illinois Compiled Statutes. We are happy to help answer any questions on this. Jo has been working with most of these over the last few years and is really well-versed in some of these. But it's just important for you to have access to and to know. So any questions about anything that appears in this folder or anything I've just talked about so far? Okay, so we're going to move on to our section on Rails board meetings. To go to, okay. So today, in the afternoon meeting, you will be voting on the board meeting calendar for the next fiscal year of our board meeting. You probably saw in your afternoon packet all of the proposed dates for that meeting. In the past, we've also tried to travel to at least two different locations throughout the course of the year. The board last year talked together about the fact that they thought it was good for us to go to another location at least twice a year. Earlier in the spring, we visited Coal Valley, and so we are now targeting our September meeting for potentially being at a secondary location. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that in the afternoon, but we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that as well. We also have networking lunches prior to the meeting. And so typically, we get our lunches at about noon and invite local members to attend when we are in some of these other locations. We assume that the board is going to want to continue some of these practices, but that's, of course, up to you, and we'll continue to ask you for where you're at and what it is that you would like to do. In terms of quorum, we obviously need quorum to hold meetings. We have a policy on meetings via electronic means that is included in your packet, I think, on the right side. Since Rails covers a very large geographic area of 27,000 square miles, the Open Meetings Act does allow library systems to permit boarding committee members to attend meetings by other means than just physical presence. But a quorum must be physically present in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, which means the majority of board members must be at a physical location. If you cannot attend in person, any admin member can assist in making sure you're in a position to be counted in the quorum. And so Emily, do you want to explain more?
Yes. So for instance, we have a 15-member board for our Rails board. Eight people have to be in person. Now, that can be in person, you could have five people here, two people at Coal Valley, and one person at the Thomas Ford Memorial Library, as long as it is a public building with public access properly noticed, which means the agenda would be posted at least 48 hours. And if somebody walked into Thomas Ford and they said, "I want to go to that Rails board meeting", they would be sent to the room where you are attending, and they could attend also. It has never happened, but it doesn't matter that it's never happened. We still have to go by the open. And we never went to do anything that someone falls out.
Yeah.
But we've had members, 10 from community colleges, from local libraries. IT can help set up. We can do run-throughs. You can be on Zoom and still be counted as a physical entity as part of the forum. It gets, it's kind of complicated, but we can go through all that. So there's three ways to attend a board meeting. The first one is to attend at one of the rail services. Those are automatically open, except for today's meeting, because nobody wanted. Because Tom and Robin, who usually would attend at those places, decided to come in the top. But they are regularly hosting meetings, and when we travel, we usually go once to East Peoria and once to Coal Valley during the festival year. Another is to attend Zoom from a publicly accessible room at a public building. There must be audio access, and the public may attend the meeting as well. The agenda must be posted at this location as well, at least 48 hours before the meeting. And the third is to attend via conference call or Zoom from anywhere, but you will not be counted as part of the forum. Okay, so you can always attend via Zoom, and, you know, we certainly understand that people, I mean, I've had two today that said, "I can't make the meeting today. I'm going to attend via Zoom", and it's fine, because we already know we have a forum, and that happens, we know that happens. But I think most board members would agree that it's better to be in person. They kind of lose something a little bit for not in person. The travel reimbursement form, and again, any of my team can answer any question in regard to attending. And it's the same for committee meetings as well. So we will send something out saying, "Where would you like to attend?", and usually a week before the meeting. We assume you're attending here unless you tell us differently. For the travel reimbursement form, it is a pre-populated form. As Ryan mentioned, if the rate changes for mileage, I will send you a new form. I'm going to just start sending it every time after board meetings to remind people. If you do it in longhand, I'm going to send it back to you. Use the sample, and I'll send the sample also. It makes it so much easier for me to send it to finance, so they don't have to send it back to me, and then I send it back to you. Very, and make sure your address is included in there, because the check will go directly to whatever address you put on there, your home address or your library address. And this is, mileage reimbursement is for travel to and from any Rails event. So if you are going to ILA for something, you can include that as well. And if you have any questions about that, use contact.
Next, we're going to talk about how to participate and contribute to board meetings. So at Rails, we actually create an annotated agenda for the board president. By "we", I mean our admin team creates this annotated agenda that is a huge support for those who are running the meetings, whether they're a chair of a committee or of the board president. And so as we create that as a guide or script for the meetings, the chair will ask for a motion and a second. Anyone can respond, so moved, Monica. And then another person can reply, second, Emily. And the chair will then ask for a discussion or a vote. After a report, staff and board members will ask if there are any questions, but you are always free to ask questions at any time during meetings.
Next, we're going to talk about video conference locations and sensitive microphones. As you can see, we have, these are microphones, these black, they can read. One over there, they're very sensitive. Your crunchy potato chips are going like this or whispering to your, they will be picked up on the microphone and recorded for all to hear, for posterity, because of course, post all of that on our website. We've also recently added closed captioning. So if you're watching on a computer or using your computer, you can add that. You can use it if you're here in person as well. Sometimes, especially like if you're in this long row, I can't hear what Catherine might be saying. So sometimes I listen to recordings to make sure it's fine. And obviously, some people are more soft-spoken than others. Also, please do not have any sidebar discussions. It is distracting. People can't hear you whisper. And also, it can be an OMA violation. You're not supposed to be having conversations that are not public for all of you. And I think that's it. The captioning will be on the main screens if you are attending in Coal Valley or East Peoria.
Any questions on the subjects that Emily and I have just recently covered? Yes?
Our board meeting is always held on a Friday.
Yes, I believe all of them are Friday.
We do a draft agenda, and that's what you're voting on. If for some reason that you would like to change that as a board.
Yes.
Yeah. For some reason, Fridays are usually not big meetings for other people, so it's always worked out that way. But the board.
But inconsistent, I guess, is more my question is.
They are usually, they're usually the fourth Friday of every month. We do not have a board meeting in December traditionally, or you can all think that as well. But if there is, like, ILA was in the fourth week of June, we had it a month, we had it a week earlier. But typically, they are the fourth Thursday, 1:00. Except for May, it's the 10:00 AM, because it's the day before Memorial Day weekend starts.
If you are attending via Zoom, you have to do that. Can you vote, even if you're not?
Oh, yeah. It's just not part of the forum for the attendance.
Any other questions? Well, we'll move on to email accounts for Rails board members. So we do require a separate account as part of your Rails board responsibilities. So all email exchanges related to your board service are subject to FOIA. And FOIA stands for Freedom of Information Act. And that is just important, that legally we have that disclosure. For that reason, you have a Rails email address to use as part of all Rails board business in the event of a FOIA request. That way, our IT department can actually download the emails and submit them. If you were using a separate email address, work or personal, you'd have to go through all those emails and submit them. So we have had FOIA requests in the past. One wanted all emails from three months from 15 different people that contain the words "thanks" or "thank you". So this is just a really important part of our process, just to make it more clear-cut and so that we can meet the deadlines that are required from us by FOIA. You want to share about the checking email regularly, Emily?
It's very important that you check your email and respond promptly. Usually, the board of committee packets will be sent one week ahead of the meeting date. There'll be times we need to communicate in between meetings. IT can help if you need help with setting up kind of a notification on your phone that you might not usually have on there. It's important that you reply to emails. Staff depends, we depend on your replies to know that if we have a quorum or not. Or to know if we need to get hotel rooms or plan dinners or lunches and things like that. So it's very important you appreciate it greatly when you respond as soon as possible.
And finally, adhering to the Open Meetings Act, there is Open Meetings Act certification that is required. So when you receive an email from Rails staff or a fellow board member, please refrain from using the "reply all" option. You probably are familiar with this from your own libraries, but that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you reply "all", it can be considered a conversation that's happening outside of the realm of the board meeting. This is, of course, to just avoid those violations of the Open Meetings Act. If you have information that you would like to go to all of the board members, Emily or any member of the admin team would be happy to send out that information to make sure that all board can see it. If you forget and do send a "reply all" message, it will not go through. We have our email system set up so that if you try to reply "all" to a message, it won't do it. So just, just a heads up.
I will get a notice saying, "Alex tried to send this message. You let it go through", and I'll say, "No." And Alex will get a message saying, "Emily did not allow your message to go."
And Alex will say, "Thank you, Emily."
Alex saying, "Hope to see you all soon." It's just to get in the habit of just never doing it.
Yep, just a protection for everybody. Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions about any of those pieces about the Open Meetings Act?
And again, if you come up later, just email me. We'll get the answer. And if somebody asks one question, I will usually send that answer to everyone and not say, "Alex asked me this." Send that information.
Hey. All right, so we're on to Q and A, open discussion. Does anyone have any questions about any of the subjects we've discussed today? Okay, hearing none. On to Buddy System. In the past, some veteran board members have volunteered to be mentors to some of our new incoming board members, so if anyone is interested in being either a mentor or mentee, feel free to ask or offer during the break or email Emily, and she can help facilitate some of those connections. Other, anything else?
I would just say, I think it feels cooler in here. Are you feeling?
It's dropping.
You're watching the temperature. Thank you, Mark, and to Demond for all of your efforts today in that arena.
All right, if there's nothing further for us to discuss, I'll adjourn this meeting at 11:21 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.